Oh, wait, we have one more.
Yay.
Tim maybe?
Tim.
Tim.
Hey.
Hi, Tim.
Hey.
And then at some point, I'm sure Sean will will be around, so we we are good, we have a quorum, so officially call the meeting to order and we'll do some roll call. Lou or let's let's start off with Jen.
Yeah.
Tim.
Present.
Ray. And Ray's all sworn in, just so we have that official.
Everybody, that's right.
And I'm sworn in too today.
Yep, hang tight.
Yes.
Josh.
Josh here.
John.
I am here as a member of the public right now.
Okay, and um and for alternates, we have Craig. Who is, well, we've we've
No. No.
There's always this awkward thing of until we actually bring in all the new folks who's who's in and who's out, so Craig's here at the table for for right now. Lou Guarino is here, John, you said you were in the public, and then Lou is is uh is here, Lou Alvarez is here, and Sam Benedict is here as well as a guest. Alright, so. Yep. Go ahead, John.
And Nate.
And Nate Sikla is here, so we are at quorum strength. Yeah, we're we're all quorum strength, so I think the only person that is not here is Sean. And we don't bring an alternate in when Sean's not here. So we are at full as full voting strength as we can have, which would be six. Okay. Um Sean will be here, I'm sure, in a few minutes.
I don't know if he was gonna make it.
Yeah, he they had a meeting, but he's 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 getting back into town if he's not in town, so he shouldn't be that long.
Always.
Yeah, he's always.
So.
He said he'd be a little late.
Um, do we want to our, let me, sorry, let me back up for a minute. Our agenda has that we would do our organizational votes now and then do reports. Um, do we wanna wait for Sean and reorder the agenda a bit or to do votes, or do you wanna just go forward with our votes? What's the preference of the group?
I don't I don't know if it matters either.
I mean. Yeah, I don't think it matters.
Okay, that's fine. Alright, so I to get us up to full voting strength with or without Sean is um we have a vacancy to fill because Lou Alvarez resigned because he's moving into the uh select board role.
Thank you, everybody who left out.
And so we the first thing we wanna do is get ourselves up to as much of a voting strength as we can. So with Lou not here and Sean Sean not here, we'll actually be at five, we won't be at full voting strength. So. We are open for nominations for um the remainder of Lou's term, which was when
One more year.
One more year, so it'll be a one-year um position and and would go then be up for reelection in a regular cycle next year. So I've reached out or I've sent things out to all of our of our alternates, and so Craig has said he would be interested in that position, and John would be interested in that position. Um, you have agreed?
Yeah, I mean, I do.
Okay, and John, you've agreed to to consented to serve?
Yes.
Okay, so are there any other nominations for that one-year term? I feel a little.
Lou, are you are are you not an alternate anymore?
No, no, I'm an alternate.
Oh.
We're talking about fulfilling the the full board members seat.
So, oh yeah. Yeah. Yeah, but I but I'm kinda gone a lot, so I don't feel like that you could do justice for me enough. So I was thinking, you know, maybe Craig or somebody else wanted to do, cause they, you know, they live here permanently full-time.
And Liz, um I've reached out to Liz as well, to all the alternates to ask if they were interested in re-upping, we had a bunch of alternates that are terming out, so we need to bring talk alternates again. Liz said she would be interested, she'd like to stay in an alternate role. So she's gonna she's willing to stay on board and we can um should we have her consent to put her on the calendar or to put her on the slate tonight? If if we wanna add go go that route.
If Craig would like to do it, then I would be uh equally pleased if the board would consider me as an alternate.
Okay.
I don't really wanna run against Craig.
Okay.
He's giving a lot of time to the board, and I think he's in a good position to be a full board member. And I would love to continue to serve as an alternate, if that's the case.
Okay, that certainly makes the voting easier. Correct, any other nominations? Alright, all those in favor of bringing Craig on to fill Lou Alvarez's one-year vacancy, please say aye.
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 But all those opposed? Any abstentions? Welcome aboard.
Well, thank all of you very much.
Okay, alright, thanks, John, and um so we are next, um John, if I mess this up, get me help me out, but I think next we do chair and vice chair?
You should do alt, yes, I would do that before you do alternates.
Okay.
If you're gonna do alternates tonight, I would do that, it's just better organizationally, I think.
And I that's what I thought, but I didn't know if there was an official order. Um, it's different when I'm sitting on this side of the gavel. Um, alright, so then we have chair and vice chair to talk about. So thoughts? I am happy to continue to to organize you, but it would be with again the same caveats that it's gonna have to be a team effort. But I'm happy to if anybody else wants to step into that role.
I think right now it's the our best option.
Alright, but you guys can't all sit so far away from you, I mean occasionally if Jen's ever out, y'all are in trouble, there's a lot of mail around here. Any other nominations? Alright, how about for vice chair? Do I get, can I nominate John?
Nominate who?
Can I nominate?
Anyone?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can nominate Craig to be vice chair.
Oh, I I could do that, I I was also thinking that that I might nominate Josh to be vice chair.
That would be a great choice also, add Tim.
Add Tim.
Yeah.
Or Nate, I I think Nate Nate King can't claim can't claim uh can't claim to be the new guy anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I prefer nominate, I'd like to nominate Nate because of the experience.
Well, I'd actually um like to decline at least for their foreseeable future. Um, just with my mother having medical issues right now and um we just have a lot to take care of, so I I would consider it later on if if um things
Recording in progress.
And uh for the better, but for right now, I would like to just not put any more on my plate.
Okay. So Josh, you might wanna know that I nominated you because you've been rolling into this, and it seems like it would be a good, somebody's gonna have to roll into that role. So um Sean can, Tim's punting, Craig could do too. Craig's been an alternate for a while, alright.
Yeah. I guess it would be it would be up to Craig, I I'd be willing to I'd be willing to do it. To to what ex like, I don't know exactly what the role is, so obviously I have to I'd have to learn it.
Well, I haven't been sitting in, I've been is uh is a Zoomy, I've been kinda taking a seat back. And quite honestly, as an alternate, while I've been doing things, I haven't fully engaged my brain in the planning process because it's just, you know, as an alternate, you're an alternate, right? Even though some of you have reminded me that that's not necessarily the case, so um, you know. Thanks for the consideration, but over to you.
Yeah. I guess I guess that's where we are.
So I guess we I guess Josh, that's your position, and I will I'll help you whatever I can as a
But I mean, if some
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a team effort.
Yeah, yeah, this isn't gonna be trying to hold.
Yeah.
I will definitely need to help. Yeah. We'll all help you.
So the other thing that's nice is that that's one of the reasons why Liz is staying, she wants to be out of that official role
Yeah.
and help us to feel that we have to be in these roles.
Yeah.
And and that we could be at any point sitting in these seats.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I think one of the things that as much as anything that you hear Josh and I grappling with, it it I I was only five years ago in in Ray's seat.
Yeah.
So and and you do feel like there's a big learning curve, and so taking it from that from the from day one, I think is really pretty pivotal.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that was a, let's let's do it this way, do you consent?
I consent.
Okay, so is there any objection? I don't think we can do votes that way. We can we can do we can vote on Josh and myself in a in one motion, that because they're um uncontested seats, would the group be willing to to vote on one motion for both positions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, it wasn't pretty, but we got it done.
That's okay.
Hence the we all we all will sit in this seat someday, so.
Yeah.
Alright, um, we've got a couple of reports, um.
Oh, alternate.
Alternates.
Alternates, oh alternates, thank you.
Yeah, and then and then do we actually have to say yes to vote, do you guys?
Perfect.
Right.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I've done that, yes.
Yes.
So we have we have room, we have five alternates.
Well, no, we should we should say we should actually have a vote for you and Josh as chair and vice chair.
Now, go back to the vote.
I make a motion that we nominate
Do by acclamation?
D.
Vote by acclamation.
Vote by acclamation? Okay, I make a motion to vote by acclamation, to have D, Daley, and Josh Mullen, and D is president and vice
Chair and vice chair.
Chair and vice chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Good, that was one vote, killed one one bird, um two birds, one stone.
Two birds and one stone.
Alright, alternates, we have room for up to five alternates, I believe everybody has turned out except maybe one person. Somehow we got into a cycle where we had um where we had three people coming due in twenty twenty-two.
We will now have
So Craig was up, Lou Guarino was up, Liz Freeman was up.
Yeah, all the alternates are just one-year terms, aren't they?
Nope, nope.
Yeah, it can be three years.
Three years.
You can be one, two, or three years, so.
So do we need to vote on if we're keeping them as alternates?
Yep, well, just 'cause their terms are up, just like any other term, alternates have a term of how long they can serve. So we can we can bring alternates in for up to three years.
Do they have to be here?
The the guidance, if you remember our bylaw discussion from two weeks ago, um, the goal is that the alternates try to stay fully up to date in a breast of what's going on. Now, they get a little bit more latitude because they're they're not they don't like almost need a reason not to be here, but it is it is
But do they need to be here for us to nominate them to be alternates?
No, they um no not if we have consent. So that's why I make sure I ask Liz, if it's okay, would you, so she sent a letter to um to Jen.
Okay.
She won't be able to be sworn in if we, but we don't need to fill all five tonight.
Okay. Alright.
We could fill one, we could fill none, we could fill five, we could fill three. So we have always the ability to bring in other individuals.
There goes the man.
Woo-hoo.
There we go.
Alright, we are full strength. Table's almost full, it's been a while.
Yeah, right.
Alright, uh Johnny, you hearing us okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and just if I have forgotten to say it again, we're on video tonight. We're getting a trial run of 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 um Bob's rules. Instead of Robert's rules. So um so any thoughts on Craig, um no, I'm sorry. Lou Guarino said he would be an alternate, Liz had said she would be an alternate, John has said he will be an alternate. So do we have any other folks to bring forward?
Really, you're here all the time.
Yeah, you've been here more than me.
He's kind of the public citizen guy. He's our public member.
You can you can just, there's no there's no rush unless you're anticipating a
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, no, I agree, John, there's 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 not a need to rush, if other people wanna come and try it out or
And if you get if you get appointed as an alternate mid-year
That's fine.
And that's essentially your your term will still, if it's a one-year, your term will still follow the voting, the
Yeah, it would, yeah, it would follow the kind of this cycle, we tried it this meeting, so somebody comes in in six months, they'll just do a six month
Yeah, yeah. A little bit. Yes, yes.
Or they could go be two and a half years over it.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have three nominations, we have Lou, G, John Schamoffel, and Liz Freeman. Is there a motion to bring those three on for three-year terms?
All threes?
Yes, those are all connected.
That's what I'm wondering is, so um, why don't we bring Liz on for a two? And the other two on for a three? Would that work? I think that's what I talked about.
Somebody should be one.
Yeah, I would say one.
Nope, we don't, we can go, we've got five alternates, so we have two threes, two twos, and and a one.
Okay.
So we don't have to, we don't have to stagger the three alternates across all three timelines.
Can I can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
So the first time I did it, I came on as an alternate for a year. I think that's a great way for a person to do it. I would leave two spots open for possible new people for a year because then they can come on and they can try it, and if it's not a great fit for them or anything, then they they can just let it sunset. And and if they really like it and they're good at it and great at it, and they and they wanna get more involved, they could ask for a longer term, or they could run for a seat. That would just, that's just a recommendation.
Sounds like that echoes what you're saying, D is Liz for two and then Lou and John for three.
Is that the motion?
Yes. Second.
Alright, so are you for the discussion? Alright, all those in favor of um our alternates being Lou Guarino for three, John Schamoffel for three, and Liz Freeman for two, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you all.
Yeah, alright, we are now not quite full full strength, but we're definitely full voting strength and our alternate pool is rolling hot. Alright.
Yes, I swear that.
Alright, so John's gonna swear all the alternates in.
He's gotta
Say what?
He's gotta swear.
Sean.
Sean.
Sh- oh, yeah, or John, Sean.
Like, go, John.
It's not gonna count for much, you wanna sit here with the tin can?
No, sorry, no, it's not, they do the reading and I had to sign off, there's nothing for me to say.
Lou swore D in.
Yeah, I'm already taking care of it.
Before the vote.
I did the paperwork already.
Which she as a mem- member.
So you need to swear and then Craig and John.
And Lou, actually, you did today.
Did you just swear?
Yeah.
But we shouldn't have because he had to be voted on, what if we didn't want him as an alternate?
Can I be wobbly now if they want to know?
Alright.
That's alright.
So Ray, this is maybe the most exciting, it's kinda like the first day of class, you get the syllabus, you know, it's
And then he can
Um, yeah, that's fine. John, do you have a copy of the swearing in?
Yes, I do, sir.
Alright, so those two uh paragraphs, would you mind reading those aloud?
Oh, I don't have it, hold on one second.
Yeah.
I mean, uh
Let me start with Craig. Yeah, I'm not much for poppin' circumstances, not too fancy. No Bible's gonna be like pulled out.
I could've brought my saxophone if I knew that we needed it.
You want you want me to read it now?
Sure.
I, John Schamoffel, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will be in fair faith and true allegiance to the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire, and will support the Constitution thereof, so help me God. I, John Schamoffel, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a planning board alternate member for a term of three years. According to the best of my abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
Thank you, John, um for assuming that role. You are have been appointed as an alternate of the planning board, and I'll just need you to come into the town office to sign off on this form at some point.
Will do.
Alright. Alright.
We're getting a real-time update tonight.
Not three years, I mean.
You know, the last time I had to do something like this, I actually got a bonus.
Is that the military?
Yes.
Well, I wonder if we give you a hundred percent bonus right now?
That would be pretty cool, a hundred percent of nothing is, I mean, I do teach math every once in a while, so. But you want me to raise my right hand? I, Richard Smith, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will bear faith and true allegiance to the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire, and will support the Constitution thereof, so help me God. I, Richard Smith, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me for the position of planning board member for one year. Uh, according to the best of my abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
Thank you, Craig, welcome to the planning board.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you for your continued service on the planning board. Um, if you can just fill out that bottom section,
Mm-hmm.
and then on the middle section, there's a sign signature line underneath the two paragraphs that you read.
Uh-huh.
So you sign that, date it, and then fill out like the left side of the bottom.
Yeah.
Great.
You you had missed the beginning. We actually, Craig was voted in as the taking over Lou's spot for his last year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not as an alternate.
Oh.
So that's why it was the one-year term.
Oh, the one-year, okay.
Yeah, that's what we were changing, realized as we were doing that.
You may not have been up to see them.
Yeah. I wasn't sure, cause on John's, it it's a it didn't say alternate, and it only had one year on it, but it was three for an alternate, yeah.
Great.
So I corrected that.
Thanks, everybody, alright, so
That's that's okay, Sean, I withdrew because uh Craig is hardly qualified and uh and attractive than I am also.
I think this goes to the whole sharing of the duties of 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 and contributing to the town. We all rotate positions and shift around and it's all service on a different level. So Ray, another thing is that that Craig is officially Richard and not Craig,
Oh.
so that's why he gave his official name, if you're wondering why he has two names, because we call him one, but it's not necessarily the real one.
No, his smile says it's a story, but I don't know why that's broadening.
There is a story, but it's not a perfect. But it's something my father told me when I was about three or four years old, and I will never forget it.
Alright, so uh we are up on the agenda to the selectman's report and the chairman's lay use report, so uh what do you got for Sean?
You know, there's a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah.
What do we need to know?
Um So we had an encouraging cemetery meeting uh just this afternoon, uh so we're getting close to uh a settlement and agreement with the state. Uh, have to report that, um there looks like as on the cemetery subject, it looks like there may be um a community member that's looking to donate uh some land, like in order for a cemetery expansion. So that's something coming up, um yeah, and I can't think of much off the top of my head, and I have the moment to, you know, prepare ahead of time, so I apologize for that, but if there's any questions or anything that anybody would like me to look into, besides speeding, um
You didn't get card?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, no, 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 I'm just saying, cause that's a long-running uh issue.
No, he's
Great, alright Jen, what do you got?
I, I don't think I really have anything other than welcome the new member. Woo-hoo, um you did get my email with all the links to
Yeah.
Okay, um no, that's, I don't have anything to report.
So it I wasn't kidding that it isn't hazing to read a hard road to travel, at some point in time, you'll you'll wanna have that under your belt. Um, I don't know how how long it took you to go through it, or Josh, how long it took
Still working on it.
Yeah.
It is
I'm making it open.
Do we, do
Yes.
Do we have, or this would be to Jen, do we have the new books?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Do you do you want her to leave a new book with uh the office when you drop off your um your your swearing form?
No, I was talking for the new member.
Oh, yeah, she's
I don't think there's any changes that I'm not ready and eager to rush to get a new book.
I've already given it to him.
Okay, yeah, and she's
I've got orange and white, so.
Okay. Great, okay, so the only only update that I wanna give is um Ray and anybody else that is not been going to the um state conferences March twenty-eighth, March twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, the registration opens for the um for the New Hampshire Municipal Association for uh the planning board conference, the annual planning board conference. And I think you probably just need to let Jen know if you wanna go, and the dates on that are
That is what I had, and I left it in my office.
I'm just gonna get you back.
You say March, right, not is the
Virtual, I think.
Uh, March twenty-eighth, the registration opens, and usually it fills pretty quick, so um, just let Jen know if you want to go, and I am looking for the date.
That's still virtual, though, isn't it?
It is, it is virtual, and I believe it's over two weekends. Yeah, it's over the weekends of April thirtieth, like nine to twelve, and then April, I'm sorry, May seventh. And I think it's nine to twelve again, and I don't know if you can register for the two blocks separately, um but I you sent out an email to us, didn't you, on this topic, or did you hand out a flyer, or can you get everybody a flyer?
Mm-hmm.
So that they know and can let you know.
Did I send, I think I sent that out. If not, I would send it.
I think you did.
I I believe you did.
Yeah.
But not every, it it's hard when it's like they send it out and it's a month before you can register. So if you wanna make a a note, you send it up to us, like next Friday, will be like the Friday before we can register.
Make a note, a reminder.
That way we can all
Well, I'm not doing it Friday, cause I don't work Fridays.
Okay, you're right, and I always forget that. Alright.
I don't work Fridays.
You're getting the whole, this is the organizational meeting part that we do. We all we all kinda know, but it's
Don't ask you to work Fridays.
Excuse me?
Alright, I think that's
Don't ask you to work Fridays.
And I think that's all that I have that we're gonna do at this point, so we're up to minutes on the agenda. So we have a set of minutes, I'll throw them up on the big screen. They're pretty short and sweet. I'll do my little scroll for you. Does Dropbox work for you?
Yeah.
Was that okay for you to get your stuff?
Yeah. Yeah.
Jen, Jen will uh if if we let Jen know if she if we need something printed off, she's generally happy if something's just giving you a fit or you want it in paper to work on while we're here or something, okay? I did reach out to Attorney Madola, we are all set, he said we were good the minute you guys the the planning board did our last interaction with him, and he was fine being our 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 guy, and he sent us his rate, which is like two hundred dollars an hour or something like that. Do we have an update on the cemetery trustees, when they might come talk to us, Jen, not you?
I put it out for April, he hasn't confirmed it.
Alright. Am I going too fast to you guys, okay?
May I ask a question on this?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, on the commercial district.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it says that there's gonna be a discussion on the twentieth of April.
Mm-hmm.
Who is going, is someone coming in to talk to us about this, or is it something that we are, is it a self-generated, something that we are gonna talk about?
My recall is that it's self-generated and Josh is gonna lead us. Do you want me to add a note?
Just continued discussion.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Will we further discuss at the April twentieth meeting? Yeah.
Right, cause that wasn't really specific. Good call. Oh, no, I said further discussion.
Hmm.
Do you know?
Yeah. Further discussion on the twentieth of April, yes, I was just wondering who is going to be doing that? Do we have somebody, a lawyer coming in?
We don't have a guest appearance yet, you can talk to Josh, maybe bring the realtor.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see what we can drum up. Essentially, it was the last time I had only tried to contact, talked to one, tried to contact a second on the, on the, uh.
Real estate.
The real estate agents, realtors in town, and so I was gonna follow up with it, or try to get more contacts from that.
Yeah, could my, I don't know if we wanna open the Pandora's box on this now, but. I just think, when I drive down this road, right out in front of us, we have all sorts of little things popping up here, there, and everywhere. And as an alternate member of of the board of previous, it seems like, um, everyone else is driving us. And we're not driving, as a planning board, we're not driving the plan for the town. And I don't understand why that's not the case, is that, so that's just something I struggle with, it.
Yeah.
Why aren't we out in front of this, leading it, and maybe that's what this is about, versus people coming in, does, well, we wanna do this, and we wanna do this, and we wanna do this.
Yeah.
Okay, we find out secondhand, and sometimes when we find out secondhand, things are already going. And we're playing catch up, and that I don't think is, you know, it's, it's a helter skelter thing, and I I don't want to see newip switch turn into, um.
Yeah.
Centers of development that have no rhyme or reason, they're just there because that's.
Yeah, yeah, which primarily, you know, the newip switches more households and, uh, residential neighborhoods, but yeah, yeah, it's. Some of the coming in after is, is, uh, we can use that to our advantage to a certain extent as well, and that's trying to figure out, um, how. People, I actually had a conversation with a guy, um, he's, he's trying to do some type of a machine work out of the garage that he has in his house, which. And he's kind of a little bit panicked to see what, hey, what's going on with that, and you're like, it's. That type of a business, as long as his neighbors are okay with his business, and are, you know, essentially it goes to his neighbors to know if they were gonna be willing to let him go there. Then that's, that's our system right now, is to, is to allow it, if, if his abutters are okay with it. And so, yeah, there's, there's a little bit of, newip switch isn't based around any center, and there's a little bit of chaos in the. And but how do you clean that up is the question, how do you, how do you really be deciding?
Well, when I think about commercial district, the things that I think that go along with it, and I could, I could stop.
No, you're good, I'm just getting the queue, I'm getting the queue.
I was just saying, we should probably move this to old new business.
Yeah, let's talk focus as an old new business topic, cause I'd like to get into it, I also have a couple contributors.
Yeah, we're getting away from the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I really appreciate some of your points, so.
Great, so let's, is there a vote on the minutes?
Uh.
Make a motion to vote on the minutes.
Second. Can you, is there anything else?
Nope, that was it.
That's it, that's enough.
Except motion to adjourn by me, by Josh, which has always been.
Yeah. You can't change that.
I wasn't here.
May I mention a quick follow up to those minutes?
Yeah.
Uh, there was one session in there about, um, I received a letter from an electrician about the solar panels.
Yeah.
And, um, I fed back to him and asked him to get in touch with Debbie Deaton, as town administrator, and let her handle whatever needs to be done.
Great, she knows.
Was that at this meeting that that happened, or after? Cause we can't change the minutes if it was after.
No, I'm not changing, I'm not saying change the minutes, I'm just providing.
Oh, information, follow up, sorry.
Alright, any further discussion on acceptance of the minutes? Alright, all those approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions, sweet, alright.
It's so hard to be quiet.
We're back to, we're back to where we started, back to the agenda, um, and we have old new business, so if you wanna now roll that dialogue a little bit more. Um, Tim, you're rolling into Josh's, to the general dialogue that was just going on on the commercial district?
Yeah, yeah, it's ideas on that.
Okay, right, so let's continue with that and then we'll roll into our book, so we're not trying to change horses midstream.
Okay, so a couple of things, I just wanna support what I heard, so, well, really good idea, so, yeah, I agree that we, we should get ahead of it. Um, I think there's been a couple of big forces that have created opportunity for people. And I see it popping up, I have some other citizens kinda calling me up, or con, you know, I need a business license, and a lot of things that. Other towns may have, they don't, it's not available, so I agree with you on pace. Um, and I think that we should do our duty to, to kinda get some guidelines set in. Um, the abutters idea is really important to me, uh, personally, um, and I think it's really a, a matter of community respect to kinda like. Get along with your neighbors, so I think that we do have a responsibility to get some guidelines, you know, in place.
And zoning board does have those.
What's that?
The zoning regulations do cover that.
Abutter communication?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really?
Now, um, may I ask with regard to the abutter, you know, technically speaking, the abutter is just the person, right? Whether the left or right, northeast, west, but shouldn't we consider the particular item that the commercial person will do? And its ability to go beyond just the abutter, so for example, if it was noise or dust or something like that. And so maybe the abutter list is in fact more than just the abutter, but the second and the third abutter, just depending on the characteristic of the.
Um, yeah, I'm not, and I can look into that, I'm not sure to what extent they, the zoning board looks at that, as far, cause as far as your. Your road impact, things like that, there is thought put into it, right, if you're gonna do something commercial where. You're, you are gonna be putting a, a large toll on the, on the road that's going in, or the road can't support it, that's looked at. Um, to what extent that, that does, I'm not sure, that's something to, to look into, in, but. To, back to the, to the, I guess the original, and and one of the main things is for newip switch. Getting these areas nailed down is tricky, cause where do you, where do you commit to being a commercial district? What do you say, you know, and that's really what, part of trying to figure out what you want to, the commercial district to be, and then saying where.
Yeah, m- may I throw out that, I wasn't really completely done with touching on many of the things.
Yeah.
So just jotting a few things down, and from my experience, I, I lived in a community that was developing, it was, as it was going along. And that's, uh, that's Papillion, Nebraska, that's, uh, right outside of Omaha, and, uh, I moved three times. Because my realtors told me, your property will be okay, you're not gonna find a hinky dinky next door or a gas station. Well, I was there for quite a while, guess what I saw, the hinky dinkies in the gas station, well, they caused, it caused me to move. Like I said, three times, the last house that I was in, the realtor, Mark Rubin, I'll remember him quite well. Forty Second Street's not gonna be a commercial street, we've got this in writing, right, okay, Mark, I'll take, I'll take, I shouldn't have done this, I'll take your word for it. Well, I moved, and I went to South Carolina, was in Europe for a while, came back to visit my old neighbor, guess what? It's not the way it turned out, it was, it's all developed, it's a commercial street going down. The things that I'm concerned about, that I think that we need to take into consideration, there's environmental issues, uh, noise, um, water pollution, things of that nature. Uh, I definitely understand the thing with the abutters, but abutters don't always stay, they can be there for a little while, so what's okay with a butter A may not be. Conducive to a butter, the next abutter, who may hear the same story that I heard, but it turns out that that's not the case. Property evaluations, I mean, we live in a nice area, well, somebody wants to go into business, I say it's okay, but. What does that, what does that do for my property valuation, it, it can go right down the toilet.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And that affects the tax basis, uh, utilities, um, three phase power, um, IT. If, if we actually had a central commercial district where those things were taken into consideration, where we could go to someone, say, this is what we want to do. It, I think it would be to our advantage, because then everybody would know, this is the commercial district, you're not gonna find this in your backyard. And we've got all of the support that's there, everybody around here works on public water, or your own water, your well, and your own septic. And there's limitations to that, if we had a commercial district, maybe that would be more conducive to them. It, it could be a five hundred person building that goes up in there, um, safety issues. I deal with those every day, honestly, uh, I came to this board, uh, no, the sec, selectmen board, three years ago. And I, I told them that, uh, I had walked almost in every street in Europe, except, uh, not in Ukraine, thank God. But, um, and that I feared for my, I never really feared for my safety, but I fear for my safety when I walk outside my door, and I still do. Because I live on a road where people love to speed, and I know they like to speed around here, just typically speaking. But not twice the speed limit or more, and drag racing, so that, that bothers me, and then the classification that the road is on. So my, my home is like thirty feet from a thoroughfare, what happens if somebody that's down the road decides they wanna do service to eighteen wheeled vehicles? What does that do to me? Um, it, it really would ruin my home, because my home is two hundred years old, and the, the street's not built to support absorbing all the vibrations. It's, it's things like that that just kinda get under me, and I would wish that, as a planning board, that we're taking a look at this, and we're actually saying, this is, this is where we wanna go. And then get public consensus, obviously, right, and then move forward.
Yeah.
Not doing it helter skelter bit by bit, and end up having, you know, strip malls and all these other little things all over town, I, I just. I can't imagine that the, the town would want that.
Yeah.
But that's what's happening right now.
Well, it's funny how this has developed, cause the original idea was just to make it simpler to have commercial space, and not really considering that strip mall aspect, or. A bigger grocery, you know, chain coming in, or what it could allow, cause it really was just the focus of allowing that next step for the home businesses. Like to have a storage area and like a small front office, you know, similar to the, uh, Appleton Business Center. Um, so it's good, like, it's good that the conversation's gone this way, cause I've gotten the same, I've gotten pluses and minuses from people, um. Some people wanna see the growth, others don't wanna see that type of growth, like where we allow in those, you know, like strip mall act, like more strip malls, and. Like having our, you know, one twenty four turn into, you know, one oh one A or something like that. Um, and that wasn't the original intent behind this, um. But now seeing that it could possibly lead to something like that, it definitely gives you, you know, a pause for thought, and also. What can we do to restrict certain types of growth, like what can we do to, you know, kinda like guide, like where this commercial growth goes, like to limit it? Or do we have to be hands off completely, like is it a all or nothing scenario? Cause if it's all or nothing, then it, you know, it's not that attractive really to just, you know, say we wanna have more commercial zoning in town, um. And it gets to the bigger question of just community growth, like our town growth, and what's the path, you know, for the next five, ten, twenty years? Um, as a whole, like the whole community should have a voice in, you know, speaking to something, cause as we do have, you know, a high percentage of. You know, small businesses that are run out of, you know, people's homes, uh, it doesn't necessarily mean that we want it to turn into, you know, jaffrey or. You know, like even areas of range and.
Yeah.
Things like that, so.
John?
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things to remember with the, the comment about making sure we keep our abutters notified and engaging abutters is that. Remember, spot zoning is illegal in New Hampshire? So I don't believe you can just go ahead and pick certain lots and say, this is a commercial zone, or that is a commercial zone, or that is a commercial zone. There, there has to be some, it's not saying that there can't be different spaces, but there has to be something sort of related about it. Uh, where it has to be sort of designated that way, but along those lines, designating a commercial district of any sort would require a significant zoning change. For the town, so that, I don't know if that would have to go to town meeting, or just a hearing, but there would be pretty broad notification of it.
Any change in the zoning ordinance would require us to bring it before, uh, bring it forward as a warrant article, um.
So it, it's, the, it'll be about as widely notified beforehand, so that we wouldn't have to worry necessarily about selective abutter notifications. And I also don't think that you could just randomly pick lots, so in other words, that person A who owns the. I don't know what called, ice cream shop wants it commercial, because they wanna produce more product for sale, I don't think you can just take that lot and say, oh, this is a commercial district now.
So we have, um, we would have two meetings, two public hearings, and it would go to the voters. And we also have, maybe before the twentieth, we should all review the, um, the zoning regs. Because the zoning regs actually lay out currently several types of commercial districts. Um, and, and I'm gonna mess it up if I try and do it cold turkey, but there's several different kinds, but what we've never done is define where those are. So I, I think we're gonna have to look at what's in those things, like maybe recreation is great, if somebody wants to set up a putt putt range, that'd be great, as long as there's no lights, or. Or whatever the, the criteria is, um, I think we have lists of things that seem good, and then we have, I think we have two different classifications.
Yeah.
And so we need to think about the what, and then even though they're there, we don't have a where right now for them, there was never an actual district designated. So the question is, do the, do the designations need to change or be updated, and then the where would be?
Yeah.
If we decide we wanna go that route, so I don't know if you wanna break that dialogue up, maybe next time to talk theoretically and to review things specifically or something?
Yeah, cause that's, some of, some of your concerns would, would be potentially met with, with, uh, commercial district, but. Some of them may not, you know, the, the i, the idea, like even, even saying, if we, if we, if we say that this one twenty four is zoned commercial. And we want to allow things that can take, that, that we have public water and public sewer, you know, that. The infrastructure that has to go in to get that is something that would be more than, you know, we don't know where we put that, right? Uh, and I think that's, that's part of the, part of the conversation, is trying to figure out if we're doing it for taxes. Is that something that's even, you know, if, if we say, yeah, it'll, it'll generate X amount of tax increase? That, if you talk to, uh, Liz will have said in previous times that. That is offset by, by the, the infrastructure, but, so, and that's, so you say. Some of those are something we gotta talk about in the, in the communities and, and try to figure out where we, where we wanna go.
I'm gonna go off of that, back to your, so I, I'm looking at, at the advantage of your notes, and there's a list there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I wanna just verbalize one thing and then ask how we can use that as a communication, just to kind of align on things. Uh, one is an environmental, which would be air quality. And then the other one is, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna need a little bit of help to, to find this, but the use of water. Because aquifers really affect the whole town. And so like the underlying, so if somebody comes in and just is using millions and gajillions of gallons of water out of the well, and draining everybody else's well. I think that those are, that's a resource consumption, so there's a category of environmental, air quality, noise, we have a noise ordinance, but then resources.
Yeah.
So there is potential for contamination too, right?
Absolutely, cause like MBTE, there's all kinds of evidence.
Didn't Manchester staff it up in, in Manchester?
There's MBTE everywhere, and it just goes.
Is that what that is?
Uh, I don't know about that one, but it's, um, additive to gas. Oh, I don't know about that one, but it's, um, additive to gasoline.
Uh.
It's not degradable. I have a relative who was in a big litigation on it, and the MBTA went down in the soil and it went out into the community. And it poisoned everybody's wells, and they were guilty.
Mm-hmm.
So they had to remediate, so you're, yeah.
Yeah, but in the meantime, you know, when your kids get sick and you don't know about it, you know, it's always sad.
Right, so that would be an environmental impact, but then it's a natural resource too.
Right. Right.
It's like, if, if the natural resource is being drawn from other people or from the community, then it needs to be some type of a, something there for that.
Right.
So it sounds like if we, if we say yes, go forward, we may have more than just the main ordinance, but all the pieces that we'll need to check. And I think for some of the things like wind farm and stuff, a lot of this comes up. Or some of the other sub, like classifications that we have talk about, like, if you have equipment on site, there has to be a space that has like a like for the towers, I think there's something that there has to be a place where the, if like the, the gas or on the generator goes, that it'll go into a containment device, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
But there's probably lots of ways we can look at that, but I think you're right, Tim, we've got a we're gonna have multiple pieces that we're gonna have to all pull together into one cohesive.
Yeah. Right, and the other thing I'm gonna just throw out there is that the question, the direct questions from citizens is, I'd, I'd like a business license. I say, well, we don't have an application. And I wonder if the idea of a license, and I'm not saying for better or for worse, but it's a nice way to organize this. And to be able to have a very clear communication, like a protocol, in order to get a license, you gotta talk to these people, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, prove this. Consider this, understand the regulations, something like that. So maybe a licensing mechanism might work.
We also have HOAs to deal with that have covenants, so covenants could be something that we have to consider as part of this.
Did, we had an application, didn't we, for, for, uh, some, there was a business that was thinking of moving into the ABC.
Yeah.
With that oil recovery?
Yeah, recovery, and there, there was, there was things that we, that were brought up that they had to, to meet, guidelines that they had to meet. Where did be, where did those guidelines come from?
Good, good question, I'd like to know.
So.
From, probably from the state.
Yeah, that was the state, the fire marshal's, yep, office, is what, uh, Meredith had went off of for those regulations. And really, if that gentleman hadn't reached out to the town office and just said, hey, this is what I'm thinking about doing, he'd be there right now operating, and it would've been fine, because there's really nothing against it, you know, until like he, you know, got the fire chief involved essentially, so.
So that may be a separate, whole separate thing that we wanna look at in this next year. A lot of times during this meeting, we lay out what we wanna work on for the year and vote on it, I don't sense we're gonna immediately do that this time around, but.
Yeah, and there might be some, there might be some overlap with the state's regulations. The town's regulations, you know, through the zoning board that we may find looking through the zoning regulations, that, that some of this is covered. Um, certain aspects, you know, for your, for you, if you're in a historic district with that, what can come in through our zoning right now? Then also, if we, if we are more diligent with the state regulations, what that, what that actually.
That kinda like brings up a, like a big issue too. Um, because in our community, we've enjoyed not having too much policy, not too much procedure, not too many forms, not too many regulation to go up against in order to do the things that we'd like to do on our property. Um, so that's been some of the pushback, is just that we're actually creating more government. And that's the opposite of what our community stands for, is less government, but then, you know, by default, we're actually creating more government.
Until the neighbor moves in and opens up a business.
Yeah.
And I think there's a difference between the people who buy after the decision's made, than the people who are there when it's made, sorry, John, go ahead.
No, 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 I mean, that's the example with the person who was gonna process the waste oil. The only way we actually probably knew about it was because they were straight up and honest. The town may have never known otherwise. And they could've started operating.
I agree with the honesty, but they also, the people I talked to come from expectations outside, and which, which, which has an obligation to call the government and say, hey, I wanna do this. So I think there's a couple of things with that honesty. But they were direct, John, I agree with that, if they had said nothing, then they'd be just doing it, so.
So I think that will, uh, guide Josh a little bit more on, on maybe, I'm not sure exactly what, it's a big discussion, and we're just breaking the egg. Breaking, breaking off the first bite of the, bite of a leg of an elephant, right?
First, first bite.
We'll, we'll have a conversation on the next meeting, that's, that's where I have, and to further, and hopefully I can have a little bit, a little bit more uh, insight, so that I can direct the conversation in a certain direction.
Well, Josh, in another town where I had owned some property, um, and it was a commercial district, the town had a list of things that were allowed in a commercial district. So we would do the same thing, we'd say, you know, these are the things that are allowed, and, you know, if we don't want anybody smelt the metal, we specifically leave that off the list. And so then, you know, okay, so it's sort of two levels, one, we get in that commercial district with, uh, with things of right, you're totally allowed to. But then, if somebody wants to do something beyond that, we can consider it on a case-by-case basis.
That already exists.
Yeah, which right now we do have, yeah, we just don't have that on a commercial, a designated area of town.
Oh, is that so?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what it is, it's not the subject, it's the area.
Yeah, which we can, which we may look at the subject and, and
Yeah, tweak it, tweak it as we want, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and largely, uh, sorry, largely right now, that case-by-case basis, like, it goes everything to the structure that's being built to house the business.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's almost too, there's too much, like, individual input, and when an individual leaves a certain board or committee, like, the, uh, the bar and the thresholds all change. You know, cuz it's really personal opinion of, like, the person driving that board or committee right now, and that's kind of what we'd like to get away from. And make it more equitable, like, across the board and throughout the time, depending on what you wanna do, there's no individualistic thoughts and expectations.
Yeah, cuz that couldn't stand up to, uh, a legalistic, uh, argument.
Yeah.
So the, the stated in Hampshire has, um, a, if it's not stated, we can't be permissive. So, except for agriculture, if our regs say that you can have a sports venue, um, like a sports enhancement club, let's say. Um, and somebody wanted to put in, um, something that was, um, a doctor's office, they're not the same.
Mm-hmm.
And so, or medical, let's say it was just a sport enhancement. So our regs are that if it's not stated, it doesn't, there's no latitude for it, you would think that there would be. And in many other states, that's how it's written, but in New Hampshire, it's, um, if it's not there, it doesn't exist.
Yeah.
So you can't infer, it has to be explicit.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if, uh, the Southwest Regional Planning, uh, group, which is out of Keene, um, has anything that might help you, uh, in this issue?
Well, the good news is Josh is now vice chair, so he can, um, he gets to put that on the bottom of his emails, and we'll get him actually to send something over. So I think that's an excellent idea, it's a great way to get your, if he went.
Yeah. It was Southwest Regional.
Regional planning, yeah, that, I can.
SWR, PCH.
And we'll get you hooked up with them.
Nice. Um, so that would, that would go back to our, our, a different, different, a little bit different, but, uh, the master plan.
Yeah, I was just.
And so now, yeah, now, where, what is the direction of the town in a whole?
Mm-hmm.
That's, so that would get them involved in that as well, if we, if we so wanted.
I think that needs, I think we agreed it was a month ago that it's kinda the North Star, North Star is the master plan. Cuz it's the intent of the people, and the citizens, so.
All right, if we're ready to put this to bed, we can move in, we can segue into the master plan.
Sure.
All right, so master plan. Um, I, we, there are, I reviewed it this weekend, I think there are eleven sections to the master plan. I don't think we all wanna go through a hundred and sixty-eight pages together. Love y'all, but I betcha none of us would make it through a meeting without at least one of us napping. So. Um, I think what we might wanna do is break it up into sections, and maybe hit the highlights of, of each section. And I'm not sure if everybody would want me to kind of assign things based on either strengths and or weaknesses, so that people either learn, lean to their strengths or learn in areas where they might not be so strong. Um, and that we break that up, and maybe we do two overviews, or one overview every meeting. Um, it would take us about five months, I don't know that we wanna go from now through September and not have a plan, I think we might wanna have some meetings in between. The other thing that we could do is, we could pick, um, an evening and just, just do that as a workgroup meeting, and maybe have two of those, so maybe we could get through it a little bit quicker. And we wouldn't be lurching from section to section and not be able to tie it all together. Um, do you have a preference, and is that something you wanna, I feel like it's something we are kind of coming to just committing to.
Yeah.
Hey.
Yeah.
Can I make a, like, just a point?
Sure, yeah.
Don't forget that construction season is starting.
Yep.
Interest rates haven't gone up too much, the board's likely to get applications in the next couple of months that are gonna take a lot of time.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, maybe we do this sooner rather than later, do we have anything on our plate right now, Jen? We haven't had anything come in.
Just Bertrams continuation.
So we have one thing on April twentieth.
Support.
I'm sorry?
As of now.
As of now, but again, if something isn't in now, the April sixth meeting is wide open.
Yes.
Yeah.
Cuz you're not going till the twentieth, right, on commercial?
Yeah, yeah.
So we could do a, do you wanna start early on the sixth, and maybe do like a six to nine? And see how far we get?
Travel out. What happened to your comment about us crashing our heads on the, on the table?
Well, no, you go to sleep at eight thirty.
Well, I'm thinking we're gonna change, yeah, you do.
When I substitute teach, I do.
So you, I'm gonna give you an early section. Um, what I'm thinking is that if we break it up and we only hit the highlights, okay, I don't think we need to be summarizing, I think if we each takes it, take a section and summarize. We'll see who gets the early sections and the late sections, it's probably gonna take us two meetings, right? Unless we all distill, we can become a distillery. You like that?
What's the overall theme, the outcome, I'm, maybe I'm losing the plot here, cuz
So.
Do you want us just all to read it and, like, deeply think about it and discuss it, or?
Yeah, I'd like everybody to read.
Just get, get conversant in it?
I'd like everybody to read it, okay?
Okay.
Uh, again, you're not gonna read every stinking page, right, and part of it's like surveys that we're eventually gonna wanna develop and things like that. But read it, and then each of us has an area that we highlight, we take the highlights out of and say, here's the highlights, and maybe we pick, um, four or five areas, and then we talk about the, as a whole, and I may not do the, them in order. Like, I may do the, there's a, there's a summary section, and then there's recommendations, and I may put that in the introduction in the same night. So we get a gestalt, and then we start talking about what we get, and then we go into the, each of the deeper sections. Whether it be, uh, transportation, like, there's a section on roads, there's a section on buildings and historical. Maybe we do those, once we get a big broad picture first, would be my initial thought, that we get kind of the, the overall recommendations, how we doing on those? Where, where do we have gaps, we, of things we may not have even addressed, and then let's go into the specific. If you guys are okay with that, then that would be my thought. Nate's tired already.
No, I'm fine.
Nate, can you open up those donuts?
There's no licorice hide in there though, sorry.
I gotta get some more of that.
I bet you it might roll up for, for Easter maybe, you think it rolls up for Easter?
Not, oh, not on the website, but then also on the drop box.
A butternut, donut hole.
Yeah.
All right, so then, the only thing left on our agenda this evening is ARPA.
Sorry, before we get to
Yeah, go ahead.
The next meeting, we will be assigning those, or the next meeting, we'll be, we will be getting into the presentation.
Presenting, we'll present, presenting, if, 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 and if you know you're gonna have a hellacious next two weeks, just go, I want, I want the twentieth or beyond. And I, and we'll, I'll accommodate you, okay?
I'll be glad to take, uh, the lead, give, give me a couple of them, and I'll, I'll be ready for the next meeting. Cuz I'm not substitute teaching the next month, so I can, I can actually.
All right.
But I do want to, I do want to be involved in the historic.
All right, fun, all right. Um, does anybody have a request for areas you're strong in, or areas you might not be strong in? Do you have a preference for how we assign? You wanna learn about something you may not know about, or do you want me to just randomly assign?
I'd just say randomly assign.
Yeah.
And then we either, we're strong or we aren't.
What are they at?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. John, you got a preference, I didn't have your face up, I'm sorry. Okay.
Alternates are involved too.
Yeah.
I, I was thinking, yeah, alternates are involved too.
Yeah, I'll take a piece, I have no preference.
Okay, all right.
It's fine, yeah.
And you're, um, okay. We will get a roster out, see if everybody's email and phone numbers. Um, one of the things that I don't know if we've had an opportunity to tell, I'm talking to Ray, I'm sorry, John, is, um, that we can't discuss things via email. Okay, so if you wanna have a conversation with Sean about something, or Tim about something, that's fine. If you're like, I'm scratching my head, I don't get this, but we can't discuss things in groups of three or more.
Forum is four.
Four, okay, so we can't have four peo- you can have a dialogue with three, but when you have four, you have a forum, and we're, we're under public, public breaks. So when we go and do like, say, business and stuff, we count how many people are going, if it's more than three, it comes up publicly, knows it from you, that type of thing. Just so if you get something and you feel like you wanna respond, you can respond to Jen.
Yeah.
But don't, don't be tempted to hit reply all, we get ourselves in trouble.
That would it.
Um, and, and do you know Estoppel?
No.
E S T O P P E L, John? He'll think, he'll tell me if I got it wrong, is if we promise somebody something, it basically becomes, we promise them something on behalf of the town, so we have to be very careful not to. Yeah, we can take care of that for you.
Yeah, but I don't know that that applies to individual board members. Cuz they don't have the authority to make, the only people that have authority to make individual decisions are, on behalf of the board is the chair. And if they're incapacitated or something, the vice chair.
Ooh, double high stakes you got into now.
Right?
Yeah. Well, I don't, you know, I, it's just.
Well, there goes the terrible.
The good thing, the good thing is, is always to say, um, you know, thank you, I understand that, I'd really like to help you bring that to the board.
Okay. All right, so, um, let's move into master plan now through, I think, based on our last dialogue, when we last left our superheroes two weeks ago. Um, we had heard from the select, our select liaison, that, that ARPA funds we should put in our wish list. And it seemed like our wish list was lending towards, um, towards master plan, master planning. And the funds would have to be designated by sometime in twenty twenty-four and used by sometime, maybe a year or so later?
No, um, sometime this year.
Sometime this year?
Yeah.
They would have to be dedicated?
Dedicated towards, yeah, and then expended by twenty twenty-four, I believe, yeah.
So it would give, it would make, give us a good year, this year, to lay out and dedicate and commit to what we wanna do with the master plan.
So it was.
No, um, after April first, um, a lot of the restrictions on the designations disappear. And they have to be designated by, um, the end of the year of twenty twenty-four, and spent by the end of the year twenty twenty-six.
Either way, we probably won't have our plates yet.
So, so as a town, though, we ask that you have your wish list given to, like, sent over to Debbie by March thirty-first. Because on our April fifth select board meeting, we're gonna be going through those lists and deciding what, uh, the best way to expend the funds will be. Um, and if we're going to expend the funds at all, and make a decision like that night. So, it's important to have that wish list in, uh, by March thirty-first, so.
So we know master plan soup to nuts, I've seen twenty-five to fifty thousand, Lou said he's seen something fifteen-plus thousand dollars. Um, and until we would lay out what we wanted, we wouldn't be able to really get a firm price. And, and I don't think we're ready to just, to leap into that, to say, we're ready to do this and this and get a hard estimate. And we certainly.
Can I ask, what, what are you thinking with regards to asking for money for? Is it administrative support? Is it community engagement? Is it bringing in an expert to help us judge community intent and authorship? Cause those are all gonna have different costs. And, and the other thing is, is quite frankly. And, and this is no complaints over the quality of the service, but Jen is really busy with a lot of up things. Is she gonna have time to do all the word processing and typing and the editing also? Or might she wanna ask for some help?
Well, I think the amount of ability for a board to carry some of this. Is, is one of the reasons that, that groups pick different sized plans. So a lot of times you start off by bringing together groups to talk about what's important, what's relevant. And then you use that to develop a survey and then that survey, the hardest part, most folks say of. Doing this is getting the survey out to the public, knocking on doors, getting people to actually complete the survey to get a very high response rate. Now, I think if we, if we planned with some churches and, and next spring and we sat outside with extra uh, voting in the tr, in the parking lot outside. You know, the, at the high school, we might get a, a good density of voting if we're creative in how we do it. But the, the planning board's gonna have to work pretty hard. It isn't all Jen doing this. And so, do we need professional assistance? I think we're gonna need professional assistance for, help for writing the questions. Because if you ask a question one way, you're, you're gonna influence the answer. If you ask it another way, you could influence the, the answer. So I think we're gonna wanna find as neutral language as we can to find out what the town wants. And there's an example of a survey in the back of the current master plan. So if you're, if you're starting to get tired of reading all the verbiage and you wanna just skip to the end to look at the survey, you can see what questions were asked last time. And I think this is where having groups come together from various perspectives. You try to get to the best questions that you can. So they're not heavily politically influenced or they span the full spectrum to allow people to give you their feedback. So we have to learn what we wanna do. The execution, there's certain parts of it that we will want consultants for potentially. And, and I don't know how much of this we could get through our own research. For example, um, the census data is out. And one of the sections is about how many people commute in and out of New Ipswich. If that's something that's in the census data, we can get the data and we should be able to do our own graphs and pictures and stuff like that. I think this group would feel fiscally responsible to want to do some of it. But I also think we recognize, we don't have the chops to do some of the heavy lifting. So I would suggest that we need to figure that out and that would be part of our organizational attempt. And that's why I want us to get familiar with what's in the plan to say, yeah, we could do this or ooh, no, we don't need to be doing that. Okay, so John, I don't have the answer yet. I know we're gonna need some consultative help. I think that's pretty straight up. None of us has done a master plan before. Liz has. Um, Liz is, is willing to guide, but not to be our sherpa.
But is that, is that something we have to have to the select board, the cost estimate by this pretty close date? Sean?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't think that. I thought.
Which is, which is a timing issue. Cause if we're gonna talk about it on the sixth, then we gotta get to the fifth.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I thought that we could give you a, a, a wish list to say, you know, we want twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that, so that'd be a cost estimate, yeah. Attached to it, yeah, so that would be fine. You know, like that, what you're looking at would cost about this month.
And we could say for consultation, for, and we could lay out some of the pieces that we would be looking at. I think we're willing to do some, but I think it's gonna, we're gonna need. We're not gonna be able to get away with this for five, ten, fifteen thousand, I don't think. Are there, is there anything else you wanna spend money on? Instead of, in lieu of?
Did you say that, that there's gonna be a tech refresh for this room? Did I catch that?
There is, uh, we are, um, um.
Recording.
Recording and, um, eventually there's a capacity for, sounds like for integration with Zoom.
And may I speak? Last week, did you have your laptop on sitting beside me? You had your laptop, right? You didn't? See, I thought that was the issue with not being able to hear him. Cause I couldn't even hear him on Zoom either. You know how John said you couldn't hear him? I was thinking that it was because you had your laptop.
No.
Oh. Weird.
I know, Tim, I was missing you a couple of times where I was struggling. Well, some, it was, it was user error. I was plugged in. Instead of being plugged into my accessory or auxiliary thing, I was plugged, coming into the charger area. And I just couldn't, couldn't figure out what's because I wasn't working. It was, it was operator.
Yeah, so to your point, Craig, this room's essentially gonna be like a TV studio.
Nice.
Yeah, so there's a capability to go live, um, the select board meetings are live, uh, they get broadcast right to channel twenty-two. Um, and then I believe the timeline sometime before the end of this year, we're gonna have an HD channel as well. Um, yeah, so.
Yeah, cause I mean, like I, I did. I spent most of my time on Zoom getting into this meeting, right? And. Virtually every time there was some issue. I mean, I kept my mouth shut.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, so these microphones work really well, the, the new ones that are in here, and they pick up everything. So there won't be any of the audio issues that we currently deal with.
Well, the desks have laptop computers as well. I mean, if I wanted to look something up, do I have to bring my own computer in and integrate in it?
That hadn't been something that had been brought up, but.
I mean, uh, I don't.
Yeah.
I think that would be a nice thing to have, that the people that are sitting behind here have some of the tools, the IT tools to use. To make their time as effective and the meeting go as effectively as they possibly could. I mean, Dee's got her little, uh, planning book over there, you know, I could have.
Well, I mean, it's, it's.
I'm just, as an example, there's, there's just things that we can add to this, I think, to this room. I don't know exactly what it might be. That's why I was wondering if we. If someone's done a tech refresh analysis and then what have, what are they saying that we need?
And so not completely. Uh, right now, we focused on, I believe we had about, you know, twenty-five thousand or so dollars that they'd saved up over years.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Ron, you know, like made sure that he set aside a pool of money or made sure that we built up some money. And we're able to do the camera upgrades and microphone upgrades and software upgrades and that was just, just under that twenty-five thousand dollars or so. Um, but now with that warrant article passing, um, you know, a couple of weeks ago. I believe it's, yes, about thirty thousand dollars a year will go towards the, um, video committee, like that fund. Um, so they're gonna get, so, like, they'll be able to do a lot, which they're looking at. You know, utilizing that money for, you know, to pay people for story, like reporters almost essentially, uh, to help engage. You know, like it'd make it worse sometimes while they go cover a, a sports game or whatever it may be, or whatever the interest is. So if you would like, um. Not sure if it's a regular schedule that they meet on, cause I caught them this past Tuesday at four meeting. Um, but we can get you linked up with the, uh, video committee and. You know, you could offer some, you know, insight and input there.
Third Tuesday, third Tuesday of the month.
So that's already passed.
Four o'clock, yep.
Hey, Sean, can I ask a question on that? And I, I will say that being on Zoom, I can hear that, um. Dunkin' box or whatever sliding across the table in crystal clear. It's really, now, I can see it all the way around. So we're about video, there's two questions and one goes back to, to the master plan, though I, I think is important, but. What, with the video committee, what about the increasing percentage of cord cutters? People that just don't have cable?
Yes, yes, I'm thinking the same thing, John. Well, at that point, you know, that money is, um, comes from the franchise fees that are charged to the cable customers. And that'll go down and we may find a point where they have to look for alternate funding or. You know, get creative with how to generate money, like, I don't know.
How long is our?
No, I, I meant, oh, I meant how are you gonna engage the people that don't have cable?
Yeah.
Because is the franchise fee just for cable television? Or is it for all?
It's the Comcast.
Um, Comcast account payers.
What I understand.
A lot of whom don't have cable.
What I understand right now is the cable subscribers.
Right. Yeah, no, a lot of companies involved in that.
Yeah.
But that could also go for internet subscribers, cause it uses the same cable.
I know, but the, the fees are only taken from the cable subscribers, not necessarily the internet subscribers. It's. And it's basically geared towards being able to televise.
Oh, we want to donate.
Yep.
Just so you know, the video is uploaded to the town website. Anybody can watch a video.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so there, wouldn't be that same. And I don't know with the Zoom capabilities, if that would.
Double.
Open up to the, yeah, like the internet, like I'm not sure how that would work.
Yeah, cause a lot, a lot of people just don't have cable anymore. They just stream.
Yeah.
So, the other, the other question, if I can get back, I wanna go back to the master plan. And I know this is the lightning rod, um. Tax maps, GIS, has that been raised as a use of, maybe it's not the master plan, but the use of the, uh, I don't know, government funding?
I have not heard that myself. I was thinking it, so that would be the same.
So, it might help that, um, the. Select Board Conservation Board of Assessors and I represented the Planning Board met last fall sometime, maybe December. Because there was the beginning of contract discussions with CAI. The new folks that were gonna be doing our assessing maps, which are now up. I just pulled the, up the maps and the new maps are, are, the new assessing map is up. Um, I haven't had a chance to play with it yet. It, it's gonna take me some time to sit down, but that's up. So the goal, John, was to get that up and settled. And then conservation would start working towards the overlays. But it was going to require some time to get the system up and stabilized before we would go to that next step.
Well, then there's the aspect of work on the overlays, cause there's a lot of work that would have to go into each individual overlay.
Right.
It's not like we can take the existing overlays and just, uh, bring them over. So whether or not that, that was gonna be plausible.
Yeah, so I think that would be, if you want, I'm happy to reach out to, um. Bob Boynton, if you wanna see if we would need to coordinate with him, but I, I think he would probably be the next portion, the next lead on that.
Yeah.
Do you guys have a preference?
And he should have been contacted, like got received, like the same email request for, um, a wish list.
I was just asking out of curiosity. I wasn't. I wasn't promoting it necessarily. I was just curious.
Yeah.
So, I wanna go back to the cord cutter idea. Um. Uh, is there anything that, and maybe this is a question for Jen, but is there anything that we need for like printing services or archival? Or paper copy, storage, that kinda thing? And I'm thinking about the work that we did on the inventory, the, the planning inventory, like just being able to archive things in paper, like not cords.
Well, actually, we, the state law, if I remember what you've told me correctly, we have to maintain paper copies. Cause I'm like, oh, Jen, let's see if we can get some of this digitized. And she said, no, it's state law says.
Yeah.
We have to have a paper copy. Are we doing okay on storage? I mean, I don't know why you keep all this. We must have like the cloud car in the basement.
Well, it's all down the cellar.
Yeah, but, but that, but that's potentially moldy, mildew, whatever, climate controlled storage. And I think there's a responsibility to do so. And even like a sepia printer or something. So I just wanna throw that out there.
That would cost thousands and thousands of dollars because.
Think we're wish listing, so.
Yeah, so what does that mean, Tim?
What does that mean?
I don't think you want that money up when you.
I mean, like how does that, what do you, what do you go to buy? Like.
No, like.
No, they aren't the funds.
No, I know, but that.
Yeah. Well, no, he's talking, yeah, wish listing, like so that would be something, like a.
Like a store.
That would take all the money.
Like a store, well, maybe, but the, but do we need it, is my question before we get to the payment? Is it a need or is it nice, necessary, or just an idea that goes?
How are the documents from twenty years ago holding up? Do we need to put in better ventilation or what, some type of climate control regardless?
And it could be very practical. We could engineer it amongst some of us and we could figure out a way to get dry, but.
If I could.
John, go ahead.
Just because one has to maintain paper copies, doesn't mean that one shouldn't at least begin digitizing and storing things in a way that's accessible.
That, that's.
And that will survive most environmental disasters.
And that's part two of my thing, John, so you and I are in sync. Because the second idea would be, okay, if we get the paper stuff that we could and should do, maybe fix that up. Is there a database, an, an accessible database, like web accessible? For all of the, all of the paperwork and the filings and is there any investment there that we could make?
Let me talk to Debbie on that. The problem is, this is our last meeting.
No, that could be a SAS, that could be a SAS call.
Right, somewhere else.
And there could be.
In a protected building.
Regulations against it.
It could be, and I, I don't know how it goes, but.
I wanna, I wanna bet that they're silent on what you can do other than paper. Would be my bet.
Probably.
And then, so could we have a backup copy in case this place ever flooded? Most places want you to have a backup somewhere.
Sure, something like that.
So if there was a fire, we'd be.
Documentation, archival, database.
Yeah, can we hire a couple of students if we could find a way to, to have a, um, what do you call it when you have a naming schema? Um, for all your documents. If there was a way that we could have a, whatever the word is for how you actually find the documents after you upload them.
Inde, indexing?
Yeah, something like that is. We've got high school students that probably want a summer job and they could be feeding stuff into a scanner all summer, you know?
Yes, that's good.
Actually, there are laws that mandate that we have, uh, I don't know if the state does, but I know on the federal level, if you're doing work. With corporations and all, I know that all the records that, that my area did generate, it all had to be archived.
Mm-hmm.
And they could not be archived in the building that we were in. Um, I'm trying to remember the name of the, the system, but it was, it was government-wide. Um, yeah, this paper doesn't last forever and it, you don't wanna just put it in sp, helterskeltered out. It's normally in one central.
And for accessibility, there's people who are, like myself, the, like to minimize electronics in my life and it'd be great to go in with some paper.
Mm-hmm.
So that, I think there's an accessibility element to.
So, this is our last meeting before we're due. For the ARPA funds we were never gonna spend that we might think about spending now.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a, a wait and hurry up instead of hurry up and wait. Um, what do we wanna spend our money on? How do we wanna put a request in? We're not pulling one here, so.
I think our, our big, our, our big thing they were realizing is that the, a big role of the planning board is the master plan.
So stick with our, with our North Star and then other stuff we could weave into as we go forward into our budgets and stuff, cause they're, they're not such big dollar items. We can do them in pieces, maybe?
Yeah. I, I, I per, I mean, I think. That's one thing that we, we seem to go back to is, is a outdated master plan.
And I'm not sure the master plan's gonna change all that much. And that's been one of the arguments, but after twenty years, it's time to know that for sure.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I say outdated, but yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
Then, how specific does the request have to be? We can't just say twenty-five grand for.
Well, it does, you know, outlining.
I mean, wr, writing services, editorial services, survey.
Yeah, just outline would be for.
Yeah, I can get that, yeah.
Data collection, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it means to at least have some con, like a concrete nature to talk about it, is.
And if you don't have, oh yeah, if you don't have like an estimate of actual cost. It may come down to, cause not everybody's gonna get something. And some groups are gonna get like nothing off their wish list, but then at least. We know, we're gathering information of what the different boards, committees, departments need or want. Um, and we'll have like a fully documented list of all that, so we know that the work that we have to do. You know, like in order to help facilitate that, um, for the different boards and committees and departments. Um, but it could come down to where. We, there's ten thousand dollars left and we could throw that ten thousand dollars at like a mast, like the master plan project or something, you know, like, yeah.
Like a contract writer for some number of hours, four thousand dollars.
Yeah, there's gonna be some negotiations after, cause once we narrow down that list, then we're gonna go back to the people that. Didn't get anything and just let them know that we're reviewing it further, cause it's not like what comes out of the April fifth meeting is gonna be concrete still. It's just. Getting our baseline and working from there.
So is there a bottom line amount of money that you're talking about?
Right, I thought you, I thought you guys said.
Yeah, it's about five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
For the town itself.
Correct. And it's pretty big, like just wide open on just community, community development. You know, so it's anything that fits within, you know, like what would help enhance the town's function, you know, to the community or. you know, so it's anything that fits within, you know, like, would help enhance the town's function, you know, to the community, or for the community.
And I, I have to say that I, I, if, if that's the case, if that's kind of how it's being targeted, I cannot imagine doing less than fifteen or twenty thousand dollars into this, and making this a serious priority, because everything's gonna drive, every other decision drives from the master plan.
Yeah.
If we, if we're talking community development, and understanding what the town really wants, this becomes a much bigger priority, and, and a much faster one for the town, to, to the extent that we may say this is the only thing we work on this year, when we're not hearing, when we're, when we're not hearing stuff.
Hmm, so put that, like, right on, like, on that, so for, like, for consideration.
Okay. Okay.
And really, that, uh, twenty or twenty five thousand dollar ask is, it pales in comparison to some of the other requests that I know of already from other departments, so uh, it'd be a little bit easier, like, in order to, you know, grant that than, um, some of the other things that we have to review.
And if we have leftover money, I can put in there something like, if we have leftover money, then we could pay to get an inventory done of some of the things, the resources in town, that, remember there's a thing in the CIP that talks about getting an inventory of all your properties and stuff, so you know it can be sold and managed and kept, blah, 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 like, um, you know, we, we, the town has made a commitment to the Old Town Hall, and making sure that that's stable and potentially could be, um, a, a functional building, routinely functionally used, maybe that's a better way to say it.
Yeah.
And so, you know, are there other properties in town that we would do that with, or is it time to, to kiss a few goodbye, or, and I, I, I don't know the answer to that, I'm just, uh, that's kind of the whole premise of it, is what, what are you holding, and do you have the capabilities to maintain it, and, and things like that, so, um. I don't remember what that's called, but I'll look it up, there's a fancy name for it, um.
Which Debbie's going through some type of, um, exercise right now, I can't remember when she said it was gonna be li, finished, but for Primax, our insurer,
Mm-hmm.
um, to have a list of all the town property, like, over to them, so that'll be a fully revised list.
Okay. Okay.
You know, that we could work off of that, too.
Question, Dee?
Yeah.
Um, did you find out the name of the two companies here in New Hampshire that do?
I did not, but Liz also sent me the name of somebody to contact, um, I could not.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll find that.
That'd be great, I just couldn't find it in Planlink, just doing a search of, of Planlink in my computer, didn't pull anything up real quick.
I'll find it.
Um, I got sidetracked on one more thing, so, um, do we need a motion to do that, or do you just need a plan that the, these guys can trust me with a plan that I can send out to everybody to get feedback back to Jen?
Yeah, that's fine, huh.
You don't need us to have an official motion?
I don't think so.
Any, any, so I'm hearing North Star is master plan? Okay. All right. Anybody have anything else? I have one more thing.
Well, and just to follow up on that, it would be good to have a second, third, fourth, fifth as well, 'cause as we go through this, and if we expend the money,
Yeah.
there are other communities that had, didn't sign up for it, and the state already got the money, and they're gonna have to distribute it, so that's gonna be divided up with, with, like, uh, for the other towns, so we may get a second round of funding, yeah, too, so.
True.
W- well, second priority, I would say, is that tax maps, is a, a shared need with other part, you know, other parts of the town government.
Have you looked at the update?
Mm-hmm.
That took place, take a look at that, 'cause that was something, you know, instead of spending, like, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars,
Yeah.
uh, I believe it, I can't remember the exact cost, but I wanna say it was less than five thousand dollars, um, like, the new company that we're going with.
So it's, it's better?
It's supposed to be better, I've looked at it myself, yeah, I, I never used the tax maps before myself, so.
I haven't looked at it, but.
I just opened it today for the first time, and it didn't work exactly the same as GIS, so I have to, I have to figure, but it's, it's live, it's live.
Yeah. Okay, but if there's any need, if there's a need there, that's, I think the Planning Board would benefit from it, as well as other town departments and boards.
Yeah, and what's good about this one too, is you can actually go into the maps and create a butters list.
Nice, so it's a well.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's amazing.
Got it, awesome.
But I'll send something to Bob and get everybody an update
Yeah.
about what the next steps were, 'cause I, I remember being in the meeting and, and we all, we were, we weren't all going in the same direction, so that's why we had that meeting with, and I just don't remember, we were like the last in the, in the order of, of serious users, but, um.
Yeah, and that's what it was, was like, let's try this upgrade before, like, continuing that, like, fight for the bigger upgrade, it's, yeah, I get it.
And now also, when I get deeds every day, you know, automatically I have to go into the system, and it takes all that information that I just changed, and adds it to the maps.
Okay.
Automatically, so it's real time.
Yeah, that's good.
When did this thing come online?
Couple months ago.
Because I, uh, so when you get on the town website, and then you look at the maps, 'cause I.
It's the top one, Assessors Maps.
Oh, it's not the, and, but then you have all the different numbers of the maps.
Yep, and all those maps are the CAI maps.
Okay.
Hold on, hold tight. John, can you see my screen? Not yet, oh, I can't share.
Oh.
I've been sharing and not sharing. Hang tight, John.
Why do I not let you share?
Don't know.
Uh, okay, where?
Yeah, see, I've done this, now, so now. Board of Assessors, instead of the interactive map, go to the Board of Assessors. Oh.
Yeah, this is the top one.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is different than GIS, GIS still exists, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the one below that.
Hold on, let me, let me get John, let me get John hooked in here. Not that he can't do it, but.
Yeah, I can go on the town website and look too, so.
Yeah, so I, I was thinking it worked just like, see, here's the butters thing, and here's the layers, but it, it just takes a minute to try to figure out, like, do I need, I don't want the tax map index, I usually work from like CI, GIS, so I think it's just a matter of we've gotta get in here and play with it, that's all, but it's up.
Okay, 'cause I was looking recently at my, in my area map ten lot thirty one, and I hadn't seen any changes. And then I was actually, you know, so when you say it was updating, I noticed more of the way it's looked forever, but I didn't try the top one, I'll try the top one when I go home.
Yeah, and I, I can get the parcel number, but I don't know how to actually pick the parcel number, so.
Just go back.
Oh, go back.
Transmission line.
You go to search. The search, yeah, and you can put in parcel number, owner or address.
Yeah. Oh, okay, that's right, there you go. So it sounds like that's simpler, I keep looking for indexes, but it sounds like just search.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I like.
Okay. Good. All right, do we have anything else to come before the board tonight?
I actually do have a little bit of an inquiry. Um, so a person has a piece of property, and it's cut in the middle, same tax maps, cut in the middle, owned by Eversource.
Yeah.
They then want to put another house on that property. They would need to subdivide, correct?
So I think.
Because you can't have two houses on one.
So it depends, is it truly two lots side by side, or is it one lot?
One lot.
It's bisected by power lines.
Correct.
Who owns the power lines, is that Amnizment or?
No, they own it outright.
Or, or Eversource. Eversource owns the, so, things of, that really should've been two lots.
So it's, it's. It's. Joe Smith, uh, not a right of ways, a physical strip down the middle owned, and then physical lot, okay, so when you look on the map, there's not a Z in there, right?
A Z?
A Z, so if you have two lots, John Smith bought lot four, John Smith lot bought, bought lot five, you don't necessarily merge them. Sometimes you can keep them separate, but they're owned by the same person, okay?
Yeah, these were owned by the same person, and then that same person gave twelve acres to Eversource or somebody, one of the utilities, oh, PS and H, yeah, PS and H.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
I would talk about it with Jim, 'cause that's an assessors, if they didn't split that into two cards back then, it might still be one piece of property.
They did split it into two different cards, but the same address.
I don't think that's a problem, 'cause it's the lot number and not the owner's address.
Who gives out the addresses, by the way?
That's the building inspector.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, he makes the, he gives the address?
He gives the street, street number, yeah, once a person gets, um, a foundation or a driveway permit,
Right.
he then will create the number.
Okay.
So you can have a lot that doesn't have an address, until such time as it needs an address.
Right.
So that's why.
The tax map.
Right.
Tax map number that makes the difference.
Yeah, so if they're two different tax map numbers, then they could probably build a house on the second lot. That's all I'm saying, go to the assessors, that's an assessor question, okay?
Yeah. Okay.
When is the assessors' meeting next?
April.
Okay.
The first Monday.
Okay.
Wait a minute. What, what do you, no, next Monday.
Next Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Because I do get, you see, that, and that's where I was confused, because I was looking for a separate lot, but that, but when I look at the tax bill, I get two separate tax bills.
Right.
And since Eversource, and, and this happened, I think it was probably twenty or thirty years ago that it must have happened, that, um, that, and that, so that Eversource deed, which is in the Huddlesboro Registry of Deeds, totally separates the two halves.
Yep.
So I'm just, and I was really surprised that the title company didn't pick up on it, so when I bought it, I was told, yeah, there you go, you got one lot. And then when I pushed Eversource, because the dirt was washing onto Temple Road, and I really was pissed off about that, Eversource sent me the deed to their property, so then I real, and then that's when I brought it to Jim Coffey, and, and.
Yeah, and then he had the assessors split the
Yes.
card.
Right.
Yeah.
But when I looked at the map, because you said it was updated, and, but I looked at the map and I didn't see that update, but I'll try that interactive one and see if I have a separate, um, map.
See, I haven't looked at your map, I've only looked at your card, so I don't even know what it looks like on the map.
You should go to the assessors.
And I was trying to be anonymous.
I'm going, I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna go to the assessors' meeting and try to get that figured out.
There's a few areas they pick up on, they pick up on a number of areas all the way.
Yeah.
So.
Right, thank you.
All right, any other business to come before the board? You keeping your role now that you have the vice chair role?
I mean, I might as well, all right? I, I mean, we're ready for it, make a motion to adjourn?
All right, have a good night, you guys, thanks, John.